Running. All righty. We'll call in to order at seven o'clock. Um, before we get to you real quick, we had a public hearing scheduled for dealing with our pole and conduit licenses. Anybody would like the copy of the material that we will just briefly discuss here? Eric, did you like them? So, um, uh, we were informed that we needed to do some changes to our, uh, pole conduit licenses. Our assessor has provided material that you can find in the package. I won't read through it. Um, in essence, what it does is it clarifies language as to, um, the relationship between the town of Newfield and our licensees who operate poles, structures, conduits, cables, wires, et cetera. Uh, within Newfield, both for existing licensees as well as future licensees. Uh, basically, uh, applying, uh, or allowing the town of Newfield to properly gather information on what are on the poles and then, um, apply our property tax to those poles. Um, the poll tax rules were changed under state laws over the last several years, and this will bring us up to date according to our assessor with the language within the RSA's so that we can, uh, properly, uh, tax, uh, collect the tax under our licenses.
They tax every pole?
Um, there is a tax associated with a number of poles that somebody, or their conduits here in town. And it used to be that the individual towns were able to basically apply their own tax rate to poles and conduits. Uh, this became a problem as some towns were abusing the authority. And, um, i- in essence, what happened is the state has been imposing kind of a, here's the general rules for, for assessing and, um, applying taxes to poles and conduits throughout the state. So, um, assets, you know, towns have had to change their languages. Obviously, we need to, as mentioned in here, we'll retroactively apply this language to existing licenses as well as any new licenses will contain language that properly, um, applies to the given statutes in the RSA's.
So that includes like new conduits for underground?
Yep.
For subdivisions?
Uh, this is really for, um, yeah, any utilities that have conduits. Um, that, that would all apply with us as well. So, you know, for EverSource, for Comcast, who has the license for carrying broadband, um, as well as they provide information for anybody who is on the poles themselves. So if EverSource owns the poles, they provide information back to us about who has wires hanging on poles or if EverSource has conduit, who else may be running stuff through their conduit. So, uh, with that, are there any questions from the general public as to, um, what the town is doing with respect to the amendments on our pole and conduit licenses? No? No questions? So, um, the last page of the pa- uh, the second to last page is, uh, the formal motion, which, um, I'll quickly read through. Uh, the town of Newfield Select Board finds that the public hearing duly noticed pursuant to RSA 231,163, it is in the public interest to adopt certain changes applicable to all previously and currently issued and future licenses granted to various persons and legal entities, including public utilities for use and occupancy of municipal rights of ways, such changes to be effective immediately. Second to last page? Uh, did they come out under your copy?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I apologize. Is there, do you have these two pages here? Hold on, I have a package here. Oh, no, no, here you go. I'll give you one of these packets. Sorry about that. Your package may consist of broad stuff as opposed to-
Yeah, that's why I was wondering.
Yep, not a problem. So I just started to read the next last page, which is the motion. Such amendments include but are not limited to adding language to expand said, said licenses' scope to apply to what poles, structures, conduits, cables, wires, attachments, or any other equipment, whether wireless or otherwise, in, under, or across the town's rights of ways, and what, as well as providing for the assessment of real or personal property tax pursuant to RSA 72,23, wherever such property had been placed in, under, or across the town's right of way, if in accordance with the language proposed by the town, town assessor's petition dated August 31, 2022. The select board further authorizes the chair of the select board or is designated to execute all documents and undertake to perform all actions as may be required on behalf of the town of Newfield to implement such changes, including but not limited to issuing licenses to all parties using or occupying the town's rights of ways pursuant to RSA 231,161 or RSA 231,160-A, which have not been previously been issued a license. So that is the motion that I put before the board. Is there second? Hovis seconds? Uh, all in favor of amending our licenses with respect to the municipal right of ways? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Three ayes? Any ayes? No? All right, and then, um, I have the notice itself, which is the last page. I have the original, which you can sign and date. What's today's date?
Fourteen grand.
Thank you very much. Just because you've said it before, forget, the bottom one is pursued, so. All right, so that ends the public hearing on poles and licenses. Thank you very much for your patience. So let's go straight to the road agent. Uh, we asked you here to basically try to give us an update, recognizing that, uh, changes have been made, given the, uh, grant information that we received that we're going to be getting stormwater grant money for the road they were planning on paving, but- Yep, so if you can give us an update as to where we are, what's going to change, what are we going to do this year?
We are moving up to Sandborne Drive.
For paving this year?
Payable reclaim.
Yep.
In, oh, grinding, regrade, and place a two-and-a-half inch binder coat. Uh, and show the gravelers for a price of a hundred and forty-two thousand. It's approximately thirty-two hundred feet of road.
Okay.
It means it's a lot of work we're going to do down on Pleasant Street. But, um, but, you know, all the road gives it two, we want to do Sandborne Drive and then do Volco.
Are we going to do the intersection at Volco?
And we are going to do the intersection.
Okay, great. And when do you expect that work to begin?
I'm hoping it'll definitely be probably the next two or three weeks.
Okay.
So it'll get done by, hopefully, the middle of October. Uh, so it'll, it'll keep us within our pay.
Oh, great.
Uh, as of now, we have a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars remaining in the highway. So we'll spend probably approximately with doing the T intersection. I'm thinking around maybe one sixty. That money is thirty-four thousand, which is, but we've done roadside mowing since we haven't done it before yet. So we'll, we'll be approximately between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars remaining for ending the year. Which we normally do for, eventually, December snow.
Yep.
If we do more than that, and we usually hold invoices till the first of the year, so we normally hold around twenty-five to thirty thousand. Now going forward, we just got the road salt bids, which went up approximately fourteen dollars a ton.
From a base, how many, what you're talking about?
A ton.
From a base, what, what was it last year?
Well, last year it was fifty-eight, the year before that was forty-seven.
So it's gone from fifty-eight to seventy-two?
Seventy-two inch change, seventy-two, oh, two, thirty. Ouch. So that's another, I think it was another six thousand dollars.
So it's gone up basically seventy percent over three years.
Yeah, which we just raised, I think we went up a year or so, six thousand, we could solve.
Right, how much salt do you use here?
Uh, around four, five hundred a ton. And, um, actually, we get a lot of that, we get more ice in the heat of snow.
Right, it's all temperature dependent.
Well, it depends on the temperature. But so, um, as far as budget wise, you know, unfortunately, there is going to be some increases this year. Um, going into, you know, next year's budget, but really we have to look at uh, what we want to do paving and, uh, we're really not keeping up with what we planned on kind of fifteen years ago, going a mile a road a year, and now we're doing three, four thousand feet, you know?
Yep.
So, you know, all the time, you know, we get fuels way up, gas, you know, equipment, uh, sort of. Paving's up a little, uh, so we're going to have to look at a speed one. But we can, I mean, because it-
I know we've been working on, on, you know, basically, uh, a multi-year plan. How many, how many years basically out do we have planned right now?
Well, we usually try, if we get a mile of road, that every road would get hit a little every fifteen years.
And that was the plan, kind of what we had worked on fifteen, twenty years ago, yeah.
But the thing is, now that we get into some of these roads that were not just paved and reclaimed, we're redoing, the pavement today is not as good as it was twenty years ago. So I don't, I don't think it's holding up as well as it was, because they don't put as much asphalt on the pavement.
Is it a safety issue, Brian, or is it just a-
No, no, we put plenty of safety, it's just they're, they're cutting back on, on the board with asphalt itself. They said they would asphalt, you know, so I think everybody's on the same point. Look at the state, they pay.
They seem to be paying one-on-one every other year. Holy smoke.
I don't think the pavement's as good as it used to be.
And eighty-five's always splitting them to get them balanced.
And that's the problem, I have with some of these roads now is we reclaim them because you can't just hold it. If you have the big cracks in it already, you can't just hold it because in three to five years, the, the cracks and then you ran out of apartment to be back that road, so. But, uh, that's-
So when you, when you say you reclaim, you dig the whole thing up?
We don't dig it, we grind it.
Grind it all out?
Yeah, we grind it and we use that material right there and then we, we, we pay it.
Okay.
So, yeah, it just, it just, what they do is they, the machine, it's just like a big road, so it just grinds the old asphalt, mixes it in, the gravel underneath.
That's when you see a groove, right?
Yeah, and then they, uh, put those right back right there.
Yep.
And then we refund, then we do two-and-a-half inches of a binder, three-quarters of binder, and then typically within three years, we have to go back over the surface, an inch and a half surface.
Because they're only doing one coder, they probably, so. It's like an inch or so?
Yeah, they, they don't do it in an inch. They stretch it as far as they can. Really, it's like a team line, so. We tried, that's like we said, we sent up years ago, they tried a mile of road a year.
And you'd be at a back in fifteen years, yeah.
Right, now we've been doing, last year we did a salt shed, kind of town hall parking lot.
Right.
The only one we've had enough does is a fire station, which we were hoping to do this year. When you get the price of, I can't see if we can yet, because that's, we were going to do it two years ago, but then they were talking about the building.
The building renovation possibly, right?
So they were going to dig it up, whatever, and we didn't, we certainly waited, we waited.
That's not that big a foot.
No, so, so it's possible, we can see that, so.
So looking, and looking at least for the next couple of years, so the idea-
The big thing is if we get that grant money for Pleasant.
Yep.
If we get the grant money to do the work for Pleasant, you think it's going to kind of save us some money? Uh, and plus, you know, so maybe we don't have to spend money down on Pleasant Street, maybe we could-
Pleasant Street? Three-quarters of Mont, Mont, Pleasant? No, half somewhere around. Oh, you know, it's a basic term, I'm sure.
Yeah, Pleasant Street's a lot.
I was thinking all the way around the turn.
I guess Pleasant Street we want to get, because third of Mont, half, we have to drive it half.
I was thinking all the way around the turn.
But so, oh, once I got here.
So, um, the grant money that you're talking about is not the ARCA funds, but the infrastructure bill money?
Or-
DES, stormwater, lawn water, that we haven't, all we've gotten is a verbal.
Correct.
That we have been approved, so we won't, because we were going to do Pleasant Street. Southern Street and Pleasant Street this year, some drainage improvements, paving, everything. And then when we get out of-
Stormwater management meeting.
That's what we've been working on for years, so a girl from DES has had, she told us at the final meeting, she, we have been approved.
For grants?
For grant, we don't know amounts or anything.
Jeez. Um, so right now, that's working through DES and we'll go to council. Governor and council have to approve grant, or we're not going. Yeah, it should be next month.
Yeah, so we really won't, we won't until next month.
For sure.
For sure. We, we've got it from a good source.
Yeah.
That we've been approved, but we, we should, once Governor Council gets it, then we should be aware of the state.
Correct.
That we have been approved and to move forward, so then we have to do engineering and, right, and come on crisis and everything like that, so. That's pretty extensive, that's all.
But that's why we were going to do Pleasant this year, but now deferred it.
Yeah, we didn't want to do it, and then a year or two, dig it up.
So the funds that you're going to use for Sandborne though, does that include the ARCA funds or that's separate?
No, separate, so, that's, that's the-
That's what I was wanting to try to figure out.
That's highway department.
Right, that's a kind of a regular allocation.
That's a basic allocation.
And the reason why we wouldn't have used those funds for Pleasant Street was because the ARCA funds were an option. And that's why it's kind of separated out into two different-
No, we would, we were going to use the funds for Sandborne, that we're going to use for Sandborne, were in the regular budget.
Right.
And we were going to use them for Pleasant, but because the grant came through, we said, all right, let's not do Pleasant this year.
Let's wait.
Let's wait, right? And so we're going to use this year's funds for Sandborne.
Because Pleasant, we put, that's what we put into the grant, we wrote the grant for Pleasant Street, kind of, so.
The, the stormwater outset thing?
This is the one, yeah, the stormwater, so, yeah, we're waiting down there.
So when we know what the money is from that, we'll be able to assess, um, how much it covers in terms of-
We know how, yeah, how much we can get.
Exactly, well, how, how many, how much we can stretch the dollars, right? And then we'll figure out, do we need to spend money next year, any money next year to add to whatever we're getting, if we're not getting enough? Or do we don't use next year's budget for a different road? Right?
Hopefully, we get the grant money to do Pleasant, and then the money next year goes to all the-
Yeah, yeah.
And then up now, uh, because that will, metal, panel, all that, how they'd, uh, Sandborne, all of that.
And we did lead a few years ago.
Well, we did half of it.
The, the lower half.
We did the lower, the upper round, we decided not to do because we were in the subdivision.
Because the subdivision's coming in, that's right.
We rolled out this five, six new houses.
Yep.
So we don't want, we're going to patch and do some brackets, but we don't actually want to do, spend any money.
And have a heavy charter, then?
To, to the truck and for the gas system.
Got it, yep.
So those, that's what I wanted to say, I've sampled them all over.
Okay.
And get that, and, uh.
Great. Other questions?
Catch, catch, basically.
You have that, no, that's, yeah. You have, we have the pictures out, so.
That's what, that's what.
Every, every, yeah, if you, if you're behind it, or if you're, or is that like concrete almost underneath it?
Well, we, we don't know what that's, you know, we had that, it's just not a perfect move for some reason. Just when the frosty, it's never, it just, you know.
Think of Brian, you would do it.
Yeah, usually jimped up, kind of, the thing, you know.
Other questions?
Seventeen plus.
Seventeen plus, yeah.
I'm not, I'm willing to go up to twenty-one. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, Brian, really appreciate it.
Appreciate you just kind of telling me everything, thank you, Brian.
All right. Okay, uh, all my sense we did, next item. Uh, let's skip the audit recommendations from, let's kind of move through some of this, move through yourself. Um, I'll go to item four, the vote integrity civil action. Um, I think I forwarded you guys a copy of the case that was filed, uh, where the town is one of a hundred and thirty-some odd towns that are being sued by the voter integrity group, um, regarding the use of, uh, regarding the intention, the certain retention of prior election information as well as, uh, questioning the use of electronic ballot counting in the state under the act, uh, the act of votes system, which is what we have. Um, we're mentioning the suit, Sue McKinnon is mentioned specifically in the suit. Um, I don't have any updates on it, but I just want to make sure everyone's aware of it. Um, you know, I don't know if you guys have any questions at this point in time.
Just wait, right?
Yeah, yeah, see, see where they go with it in terms of, you know, of course, even going to pick it up if they do. Um, my guess is the municipal association and the secretary of state will be leading the legal issues on that. Um, but again, more just to make the general public aware as well as answer any questions. Um, real quick on the Vernon family farm, this is on here only to, as an update. Uh, Larry Shaw went out yesterday to do the inspection in coordination with their legal counsel and their builder. Um, uh, I think he'll be providing a report to the planning board, into the select board, um, tomorrow on that, at which time we can review, um, and then, um, that probably are, you know, presuming there's something on that report that we need to discuss or act upon, we can, uh, address it at our next meeting.
So is he going to email it to us?
Yeah, yep, he's gonna, uh, he had indicated that he was going to email it tomorrow, so unless I, unless-
Well, the planning board meeting is tomorrow, right? Is there a heading for it?
Yes, uh, planning board, no, 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 planning board was last week.
Last week.
Yeah, but there was, there was nothing on the agenda with respect to Vernon about the planning board. The planning board in October, right now, at least in, in terms of, of what I believe the coordination with, um, Glenn Greenwood and Jeff Croucher was, uh, October, um, the Vernons are coming in to talk about some of the issues that they are due to at the August ninth. So that'll be at the October meeting.
No, I was just, I was asking to see if, like, if Larry was presenting this to the planning board tomorrow?
No, I think he's, I think he's providing a report, and then obviously he'll be available if we want to have him in to discuss or if the planning board does. So, um, if, keep your eye out for that for, for Tom. But outside of that, I don't think there's any other specific updates with respect to the Vernon family farm. Uh, okay, audit recommendations. Um, this was something Hovis you raised last time. Um, questions about the audit. As you know, the audit comes, we do the audit every year, uh, the auditors, we have new auditor this year, they can come up with recommendations for, uh, usually it's about the administration of, um, financial rights in term of town, uh, financial rights for the various agencies, um, also dealing with sometimes policies that the town has. Um, usually we try to, um, address those with the town departments, especially about budget funders, they're all coming before us, so if we can talk about for the upcoming year, any changes that they, we feel they may need to implement. Uh, but this gives us an opportunity to discuss beforehand, so if there are issues that you have.
Mike, I was wondering, so how much of this is voted, like, is-
The audit itself?
No, as far as recommendations, recurrent repetitive?
Uh, several of them are repetitive, and again, it's a new auditor, so not all of them are. Uh, you know, the, you, the biggest one that comes up every year, to be honest, is the library and the library accounting.
Yeah.
So, you know, they, they have a small staff there. They, um, they, they, they run their numbers and they do their budget and they always adhere to their budget. The auditors typically wanted them to do a lot more formal accounting and, you know, um, use formal accounting systems and everything else. Um, the trustees have talked in the past of, well, you know, they're not bringing, bringing the staff up to speed to do that. They don't, they don't handle and move a lot of money. Most of the budget for the libraries actually handle that here through payroll. Um, what they're dealing with are things like purchases or, um, other, you know, other equipment or, you know, buying the movies that are available there, um, or supplies. They're just not, there's not a lot there, and to, in the past, we haven't required them to really follow the recommendation of the auditors because the level of work required wasn't really worth it and to impose on them. And the library trustees have asked us about this and we've talked about it, and that's really, really, they have come down on that. That's usually the biggest issue coming out of this, but I don't know if there's other ones there specifically.
The other one I wanted to get some knowledge out, recommendations on the draft document there, uh, twenty-three, talking about, uh, interest rate, investment, formal investment policy.
Yep.
The credit risk assessment and policy on that.
Yep.
And it's still your credit risk.
So, um, this is, this really relates to what the trustees of trust funds do, which is, um, at the end of the day, invest ancillary funds in, in trust.
Yeah.
Right, and, um, the instruments that they use, now we do have policies there. Um, I haven't gone back specifically and looked at, at the, when the policies were last updated. It's probably thirty years ago, I'm sure. Now, I will say this, um, the elections yesterday, Steve Yevich had made mention that he is trying to basically update a lot of the policies, and that issue may actually be addressed by the trustees. Um, but to that point, we can certainly have the trustees in here and, and talk about it, just to make sure that they're aware.
And that was just my thought process on that, is to ensure that there's a motion in that direction, so we should have the faith in proceeding.
Yep.
To address those issues, and not, as I said, it's asked to be done in the next six months, but there's process, progress being made on, and those are-
And given what Steve said yesterday, I'm going to be inclined to, to do it, to, to basically figure out what needs to be done to make sure that we're inclined for the goals.
And the only-
I mean, we, to be honest, we don't have much in terms of investments.
Yeah, I understand.
We don't have that many equity items. Most of the stuff that they invest in, I believe, the short-term treasuries anyways, is more of a cash management.
I understand.
Uh, we don't have any, anything long-term. I think even, even for like things like the, um, the caper funds or like the fire truck, I don't think those are like in any kind of long-term bond. If they're in anything, they might be in like any, a, a longer-term bond ETF. We can certainly have that discussion with them.
On my side on that, it's just social progress in that direction, and preclude them or some entity coming down, you know, anything else, and then, then was it not taken care of?
Yeah.
Yeah, that it's a threat, that it just mitigated that problem. The only other question I had was the, uh, this was in the town of Newfield's annual financial report, talking about, uh, not recording, wanting to return and addressing healthcare and retirement issues, which-
So this came up a couple of years ago. Uh, and, and that was, so, this, we only have two people in town, uh, and certainly when we were, we were addressing this last year, two people in town who basically qualified under the, um, retirement and/or the healthcare issue in town. And, um, the issue there was the auditors under, under the state rules, or, uh, not under the state rules, I'm sorry. I'm trying to remember exactly how this came down. Accounting rules changed as to how the town would be accounting for long-term liabilities under either the pension or the long-term healthcare programs. The problem was, in order to comply with the new rules, would require a, a very detailed actuarial assessment by the auditor, which would have cost something on the order of, I think, eight to ten thousand dollars in addition to our audit costs.
And that audit was directed towards just the actuary of things?
Yeah, the actuary accounting.
Or just generic.
The actuary accounting required under the accounting rules that they would have to do to assess our long-term liability under that. Now, for the most part, we continue to pay the, pay, the pay to the pensions and the long-term healthcare programs. It is, in essence, basically figuring out the- the present value of our payments from now until when these people are assumed to retire and any payments that we would have when they retire to account for the liabilities. And the board looked at this and said, look, given the few numbers of personnel who apply under this, given the fact that we're not, we continue to make regular payments into this, and while there's a long-term liability, we basically pay it on an ongoing basis.
So there's not going to be a liquidity issue as far as they're...
Correct. And again, in discussions with the auditors, they said, look, if you want, we can do this, but it's going to cost another $10,000.
Do this cost $10,000?
And the idea was, look, it's not providing us any additional information that changes the long-term liabilities of the town. It's just a recognition that as the town continues to pay this, the payment will be made one year and the liability will be extended one year, the present value of all of this. And it was determined that the value for additional work, it wasn't worth the incremental money, given our audit.
Right.
Yeah, we can go back and we can request it, but per the, you know, the requirements under accounting, they need to identify that we, they are not doing that work under the audit. And so that's what that's referenced.
And so it'd be a risk?
Yeah, yep. And this occurred, I want to say it was three years ago, I believe it was, if I remember, if I'm remembering correctly. And the determination was made at that point in time by the board to forego that additional service under the audit.
Has it been unusual, that you saw with your experience as far as that?
No, even though it was a new auditor, you know, nothing jumped out on the page. I mean, again, the issues that they raised are very similar to issues that have been raised in the past. And there's no major red flags out of any of this. I mean, even with the library or the interest rate, those are very minor issues with respect to an audit in terms of needed changes. We are a small town. We, you know, they always mention the fact that, you know, we should have a deputy finance person. We're, you know, we're not going to hire yet another person given the limited size and scope of what we do here in town. And so, you know, there's that mentioned there as well. But for the most part, it's, we have a fairly clean audit. And more importantly, when you look at our balance sheet, it's in very good shape. You know, we have good, a good amount of reserves. You know, our rainy data is there. And in terms of what we spend on an annual basis, we've been able to, you know, keep the budget in line, which I think dramatically improved our finances over the last, you know, seven to 10 years.
Do you see any potential risk for the state coming down and saying, these outstanding core issues?
No. Nope. No, I think, I think we've never gotten any kind of pushback from the DRA, Department of Revenue and Administration, on any of this or the town finances. As I said, our, you know, their big concern is, are you reserving enough in your unspent reserve available? And we are in good stead on that, on that event. And so, you know, from that standpoint, we are able to, you know, be in good stead in that. Would never have problems with the state.
That covers all of it. Questions?
Jackie, any other issues that jumped out at you, you know, concerns? I know you've seen several audits now, so I think that you're familiar with, again, some of the issues that I'm talking about. All right, great. So we'll move on from audit recommendation. There's a childhood cancer awareness email. I think Jackie forwarded this to, it's on the agenda. Do you want to talk about it?
Yep, September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. There was communication from Kids Cancer Connection about requesting that we have a proclamation recognizing September 25th to October 1st as Child Cancer Awareness Week in New Fields. Particularly in New Hampshire, we have the highest incidence of pediatric cancer in the entire country. So it's a really important thing to recognize, particularly here. So I would like to make a motion to recognize that last week in September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Week.
Okay. Second by Hovey. Any other questions, concerns or statements regarding this? No? I'm not a big fan of proclamations as a whole, but I think this is certainly one that's worthwhile for, to do so. I will look for a vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Great. Excellent. So just a few things here. We have the appointment for Officer Cormier, James Cormier. Chief Young has moved to hire him for a full-time police officer here in town. He's full-time, full-timer? I think it's...
It's two days.
Yes.
He's part-time?
He might be part-time. I can't remember. He, this is, he's an officer at the time. So any questions or concerns about that? I'll make a motion to accept the hiring of James Cormier as an officer for here at the town in Newfoundland.
Second.
Second by Hovey. All in favor? Aye? Sign that. Great. Thank you. And then before we do, there's no checks, which is great. So you should have an MS-1V. So this is the inventory of our valuation. The MS-1, you may be familiar with it. We, that appears in the annual reports every year, which outlines all the property in town in terms of our valuation, current use, the polls that we talked about, utilities, any extensions that go into this, commercial, residential, et cetera. The MS-1V, which I was unfamiliar with, but I, you know, I am now, deals specifically with the village district valuation. So that's the difference between the 1V and the MS-1. If you want to take a look at this, we are required to approve the MS-1.
They haven't done it separately in the past, have they?
The MS-1, again, I don't remember seeing a 1V, but, and it may be that that's new, but that's what the difference is. The 1V is just purely for the village district.
I wonder if they had any relation to the grant lines? They had to do an evaluation for some?
I don't know. I don't know, because they grant heat to the town proper as opposed to the village district.
I'm just wondering because it's, if it's dealing with the sewer and...
Yeah.
Maybe that, maybe that...
On the road for it? Yeah, maybe. I don't know. I don't know. It'll all end up over at the DRA. Any other questions, concerns? I think it's just kind of... It's fairly detailed, foresting, current use, all kinds of, all the advances that we deal with, obviously mostly the elderly exemption, investments, everything.
We need to look through this.
Ah, yep.
Thanks.
Any questions, Tony?
No.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the MS-1. Second by Hovey. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Is it cute? Oh, that's right. Just a few other items I have. I think I forwarded you guys the email regarding the request by Donnie Dawson on Badger Park from our legal counsel. It looks like we can't do a name change given the terms and conditions of the grant. And so...
Can you remind me if that includes just adding in that park bump? Is that considered changing it at all?
He seemed to indicate it does. I mean, I'll double-check with him. But the indication was, any change to the name would trigger the language in the grant, giving the land back to the heirs.
Just wherever.
To wherever they may, maybe. Well, I'll double-check.
I wasn't sure if it was, it was like she's not wanting to completely change the name of the park or just adding in. I don't mind if that was the same.
But I'll double-check with him just to make sure. We received the trash bids. I think you guys had your copies. I didn't want to necessarily get into detail tonight about that, but certainly see if there's any questions or concerns that you guys want to relay to the bidders. And then maybe at the next meeting, we can go into details and have a broader discussion amongst us about which bids we may want to accept. Is there anything lacking in the bids that you would want to know about? Or any other questions you want to, you know, get back to the bidders?
I wanted to reach out to Jim at ALM and see if there was, if we were to combine services, would that change anything?
Sure, and you can reach out to the director. Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay, so let's plan on having a longer discussion at our next meeting and potentially, potentially selecting a entity to enter to negotiate for building contracts. If that works for you guys. Okay, great. And then last item, oh, bits for trash number. That's, I had that done, that was there. Great. Prior, any other items before we get into the minutes that you guys have? Election seemed to go smoothly last night, which is good despite all the additional requirements. I think that my...
Good practice for November.
Yeah, good practice for November, no doubt. But obviously, you know, the staff that we have here do yeoman's work with the, dealing with the checklist, dealing with the polls, the moderator, our panel board. I think we run a very good election here, very efficient, and they got the results out in a timely manner, so it was really good. All right, so let's, let's do a quick check on the minutes for August 30th.
Did you hear anything from the school on the benches? Part of the benches?
Yeah, oh, right. Yeah, they were very interested in it. And I put them in touch. I sent them the information about the plastic benches so that they could talk to them directly about it. And I said, you know, if you want the town to do it, they just want to know, but I think they're going to have a conversation about exactly how it would work and then get back to us if we can help.
Have we gotten any responses for bids for the stairs?
I don't know. I know Sue was looking at doing the, doing the larger work, not just adjustments, but actually doing the regrade, but I don't know.
We just haven't heard anything yet?
I haven't heard anything yet. No. Any edits, changes, questions, concerns about the minutes for August 30th?
No.
No.
All right. I'll make a motion to accept the Tuesday, August 30th, 2022 minutes as written.
Second.
Second by Jackie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great. Great. Anything else? No? I will make a motion to adjourn at 7:40. Second by Hovey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great, thank you, guys. Thanks, Mary. Great to see you. How's your lawn going? Now that's...
Same as the summer?
These two?
I'll grab this one, I'll wait.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great. You can hang on to it. You can use it for fire starters.
Okay. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night, Jackie.
So did you have Carvana inside your house recently or the day before?
Did I have what?
Carvana.
A room, but yes, they were... So, yeah, we're hauling off the old Equinox. Very, very good, very secure on. Come up there. It was yesterday. I actually had to run back in the middle of the elections because they were coming. And I didn't want to be standable because it's kind of renowned these days when anybody's going to compliment anyone. So, but yeah, they said, you do Tuesday at 10 o'clock. I'm like, yeah, I can do that. So, but they were good. It was a pretty easy process. Really easy process. Over with. I mean, everything was done, you know, I gave information about the car. They gave me, you know, an offer. I provided additional information, photos back to them. They sent, you know, all the documentation. I signed it. They had FedEx let go there, FedEx did that. Cleared everything. They called, you know, they said, you'll get an email scheduling your date, and I got an email and a call and showed up. I mean, it's so easy, so easy to do. And quick.
All right.
All right.
Wait, I think it's the next meeting.
What's that?
The next meeting.